All right, good evening. Welcome to the Arcadia Unified School District Board of Education, Board of Education meeting on June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. It is seven oh eight P M. And I am calling this meeting to order, which is being recorded and livestreamed on YouTube and can be accessed at boardmeeting.ausd.net. We'll call, uh, the only board member we have absent is Mr. Ing. And, uh, he will be, uh, dutifully excused. And we have the pledge of allegiance from Mrs. Vargo.
Okay. Turn around, stand and face the flag. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Vargo. And you have inspiration?
Yes, I do. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you for the people who are attending this last meeting of the year. Um, uh, as the last meeting of the year, it's a critical moment in our annual planning cycle. Through the votes we take today, we're shaping the future of our district. Uh, proving the year, uh, the coming year's budget may seem dry to some, but it's more than just numbers, charts, and tables. It's an outline of how we intend to invest in student outcomes and sta- uh, statement of where our values lie. Um, renewing the contracts of our top administrators is a commitment to the steady leadership that we've had and that will guide us forward. And approving the local control and accountability plan reminds of us of our promise to listen, reflect, and act in the best interest of our community. Um, these actions show how we not only build our district, but a thriving environment where children can learn, grow, and achieve their fullest potential. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mrs. Vargo. All right, approval of agenda. Could I, someone could, uh, give me a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda. I'll second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Chavez, second by Mrs. Gee. Uh, all in favor, if they say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes four zero. Report out of action taken in closed session. No actions was ta- were taken in closed session, and we have no audience comments. So that brings us to action items of which the first is A, approval of the Arcadia Unified School District Local Control and Accountability Plan, L cap, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six. Dr. Forsey.
All right. This, uh, our guiding document as Mr. Anderson comes up. And just like to recognize that this item, and I believe the next item with the budget, really are intertwined in the work that Jim and Devo do together throughout the year. Um, it's kind of the culminating exercise in that, but really value, uh, the way you work together, uh, the way you push on each other, the questions. Um, and we end up here, uh, for this wonderful culminating event. All right, Jim?
Okay. Um, so this is, uh, this is, we've been bringing the L cap to you as, as it's been progressing because we did add a few things. So this is more of a, a recap of, um, the, the aligned budget. Uh, because it was always in, in estimates and things, and this is the actual aligned budget. Just to remind everyone that we have our five goals, and all of those are really to help us make sure our students, right, make profa- positive profound impact on their world. And so all of this is, that's our, our sort of ultimate goal, if you will. Um, oh, maybe. Having a day with my technology. Okay. Um, so just in summary, uh, there's five broad goals, twenty five, uh, associated actions to those goals. There are ninety eight sort of measures, metrics, and there are sixteen funded actions. Unfunded actions, um, those are listed in the L cap uh, as being funded in, in one of the other actions. So sometimes we don't put any funding towards it, but that funding is, uh, included in one of the bigger funding buckets. Okay? And to remind you, we did add two new actions and seven new associated metrics for this year's L cap. I don't know. Can you do it? Okay, you do it. Okay. So goal one, just to remind everybody, this is about our high performing expert learners. We have six actions, and we've budgeted, um, about a hundred and seven million dollars in this particular action. Um, and this, this one is, is what includes, uh, our, our teacher salaries and, and all of that. This is one of our biggest funded, uh, actions. And then to break it down, uh, the four actions that are included are one point one, about sixty seven, sixty eight million, one point two, about two million, one point four is about two and a half million, and then one point five is thirty five million. So that sort of shows where that big number comes, and then it's spread out through these actions. Goal two is, uh, about engagement and safe and healthy schools. There are six actions here and about five point one million, and that's broken down to, uh, into, uh, s- I think it's one, two, three, four, five actions. Uh, the first one's, uh, just about seven hundred thousand about engaging families and things. About, um, uh, again, uh, six, six hundred thousand, um, two point three, uh, which is around the extracurricular. You can see, um, the visual and performing arts, about a million dollars. Chronic absenteeism, two point five, um, million, and then one point one million on, uh, intervention for low income and chronically absent students. Goal three is fourteen, uh, point seven million, and that's really our MTSS and our world-class instruction. There are eight actions here. This is where we do a lot of our work around disaggregated groups. Uh, and so, uh, again, the MTSS is six point one million, uh, three point four is around English learners, and that's seventy thousand, is that right? Seven hundred seventy, right? Seventy thousand. Um, and then three point five is, uh, also around increasing scores for our English learners, two point one million. Um, and three point six, four point four, and three point seven is two million. And just to remind people that we are obligated to spend, um, approximately eight million on supplemental. Uh, approximately eight million on supplemental, so that's comes out of our L cap money. Okay. Uh, highly effective staff. Most of this is around professional development. Um, go ahead. And we have two actions here, and, uh, we just fund, uh, all of our professional development. So our recruitment and all of that, that's in our other action. I think most of that's in five point, uh, goal five point one, which we're going to see in a second, which is about, um, all of our budget and making sure that we're making our accountability. And then, uh, it's about, uh, twenty-nine million ahead, and that, all of that money is in five point one, and that's where we have a lot of our, um, our maintenance, uh, administration, things like that fall into that particular action. And that's sort of hit in a nutshell really fast.
That was fast.
I know we've seen it a lot, and I know you're going to hear a lot more about the budget again, so, um, I just wanted to make the connection between, but all the goals and everything, if you have any questions about those. Um, and thank you, uh, you guys really do read, uh, the L cap and give suggestions and comments, and all of those have been made. We've had, did a pre-review with Laco. Um, we did a couple of them, and our last one, uh, we were complete, uh, they said yes to everything, so we have absolutely no anticipated changes from them. So it should go through them easily and then go to the C D. We're not anticipating any roadblocks. Any questions?
Questions? Now, within the L cap, Dr. Anderson, there's references to the student, a student survey and a parent survey, and some of the differences between last year and this year were, seemed to be quite different and, um, maybe not reflect reality as much. And I know in, within the L cap, there was some language saying that, uh, you would, uh, we would look at maybe why, um, there were those differences. I'm curious if, if you've come up with any reasons why.
Why I love you guys. We, we actually, we saw the same thing, right? Um, and, and we had an ed services meeting. Um, we charted everything out. We, we looked at multiple, the two years side by side. Um, and we did, we saw some, we saw some, some, some big leaps. We also saw some big drops in some areas. Uh, we also noticed that our, our teachers and administrative participation was up in year two, and our students and parent participation was down. Um, so one of the things we did talk about was sometimes when people are, are satisfied, uh, only the people that want to gripe, uh, fill out surveys. So that's one thing that we do want to look at, but we're very, um, we all talked about how we can look at. We were thinking about maybe, um, doing the student focus groups again like we did, uh, when we were getting ready to do this. Just to kind of, to, to see, um, was it just a bad day? We also talked about, um, some of the, 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 like with safety and things, if, if the, the fires and the sort of unrest that was going on at that time, the uncertainty, I guess, if that raised people's anxiety around safety and things like that. But we do want to dig into that to try to, um, just learn more to, to see, um, are we missing something? Are there, is there something we should be concerned about? Or is there, does it make sense of why we saw a little bit? The other thing that we talked a lot about too is it's really hard because it's only our second year, so we really don't have any norm to, to sort of see. And, and this survey, again, we came from that, the big, uh, Better Together, Allen Daley survey, right? Uh, which was really intensive, to sort of this ten-question, really simple survey. So, um, I think we're calibrating ourselves too, because we used to have a lot of disaggregated data and things that we don't, we don't ask those questions, and we don't want to change it this three-year cycle, but we might start changing it so we can see, um, what grade levels the kids were in or things we don't disaggregate like that. We don't ask.
Okay.
But thank you for noticing that.
Thanks for keeping on top of it.
We had a lively ed services.
That was, that was a fun one. Any other? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Okay, I need a motion for this item, please.
I'll move to approve the Arcadia Unified School District Local Control and Accountability Plan for twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Gee, second by Mrs. Chavez. Um, any discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Item B, adoption of the Arcadia Unified School District Budget, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Mr. Vaughn.
As he's walking up, I'll just give you guys a quick update. All the buzz today on the CBO chat was that we do have a state-approved budget as of today. Nobody was doing tear emojis, so I, without looking at the details, I think it's all what we expected. The one thing they did highlight was that the new one-time money, the Student Support Discretionary Block Grant, where the governor had proposed one point seven billion, it may revise, and the, the legislature had instead proposed five hundred million. It seems like we're going to be at the one point seven billion end of that allocation. And they're saying it's allocated per pupil rather than unduplicated pupil or something like that. So it'll go out to everybody. So it's a little bit of good news.
Thanks, dear. Yeah, and then just to, so just to clarify, I don't, I have not reflected any adjustments since our May revise, because there haven't been any significant updates since the May revision from the governor back in late May, which is what our budget is based on. Uh, so like Dr. Forsy mentioned, uh, very similarly to the L cap, this is kind of our culminating, uh, presentation on the adopted budget. Uh, I apologize in advance because some of this is going to sound a little redundant, but I think for the sake of completeness, uh, it's incorporated in this presentation. So I'll go ahead and get started. This is a, a look at, um, our total general fund, including both unrestricted and restricted funds. So you see on these charts here, I've got, uh, revenue on the left-hand side, expenses in the middle, and the change in fund balance in the far right. Got two years of actuals. I've got twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four actuals. I also have our twenty-four, twenty-five estimated actuals for the current year and our adopted budget on the far right. So at a very high level, this, I, I think this slide helps to illustrate the positive trend in our budget that we've been discussing in regards to addressing the deficit spending we've been seeing. You can see that revenue, uh, is increasing. Uh, we're anticipating revenue to increase in twenty-five, twenty-six compared to the current year by two point nine million dollars. And we're also seeing a positive trend in expenses. Expenses are decreasing by two point eight million dollars. And I'll jump into the details in subsequent slides, but, uh, primarily, a lot of the expense reductions are tied to the big deficit reduction plan that we had shared with the board back in, back during the spring. And you can see on the far right that the deficit is, uh, improving. This is, again, total general fund from thirteen million dollars to seven point three million dollars for next year. On this, on the next slide, same informa- same format, this is a look at our unrestricted general fund. So you'll see that, again, uh, positive trends in both revenue and expenses. They're improving. Again, revenue primarily, uh, is driven by the increase in the LCFF COLA. Again, our expense improvement is tied to the deficit reduction plan, and, uh, most of that is tied to the unbudgeting of the school site carryover that we typically budget for. And you can see that the deficit is improving from eight million dollars in the current year to three point nine million dollars, uh, in the budget. The one thing I did want to call out is that it's a significant improvement in our deficit in twenty-five, twenty-six. One of the, I, I want to say, it kind of skews. What's skewing that by improving it is we have an additional contribution from, uh, Fund Twenty, our retiree benefits, uh, into the general fund of one point five million dollars. And we, we're, we have to do that essentially just to meet the three percent reserve requirement. Uh, within the, uh, general fund, we need to maintain at least three percent, uh, in terms of a reserve on our unrestricted general fund, three percent. Um, that reserve hat is based on whatever the ending fund balance, uh, that's the numerator. The denominator of that calculation is total expenses within the general fund, both unrestricted and restricted. So what was happening was, as I consolidated the budget, we weren't at that three percent reserve. As you know, we have reserves in other funds, primarily, uh, Fund Twenty, which is our retiree benefits fund, where we're making a contribution of one point five million dollars into the general fund to meet the three percent reserve requirement. So excluding that, our deficit would be at about five and a half million dollars. It's still an improvement versus the current year, uh, which is, again, primarily driven by our deficit reduction plan, but it's, you know, the improvement here is a little more than that because we're required to make that contribution into the general fund. Okay. And this is a look at, uh, just a summary of our budget for next year. We're anticipating, starting at the top, the beginning fund balance, um, in our restricted and unrestricted, uh, funds, we're anticipating to end the year at forty-two point nine million dollars. So that's going to be our beginning balance for next year. Total revenues of a hundred and fifty-two point eight million, expenditures of a hundred and sixty-two million dollars. Uh, we have a deficit of nine point two, just, uh, revenue minus expenses. And the other sources and uses is, uh, is primarily, again, contributions in from Fund Twenty. So we anticipate a, a four hundred thousand dollar contribution from Fund Twenty just, uh, to fund the ongoing retiree expenses that we do incur. Uh, we typically have about, um, I want to say forty-five retirees between the ages of fifty-five to sixty-five, where we cover, um, the medical expenses up to their benefit cap. That's typically about four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's the contribution from Fund Twenty. And then in addition to the one point five million I mentioned to meet the three percent reserve, makes up that one point nine in the other sources and uses. That's the net. Uh, and you can see that, you know, the big numbers, the, uh, the negative seventeen million dollars, uh, versus the positive nineteen million in the restricted. What's happening is, um, the, that contribution from unrestricted to restricted is primarily for our special ed and maintenance programs. Um, and then that gets us to a change in fund balance, uh, a total change in fund balance of a deficit of seven point three million dollars, uh, for the total general fund. And in the restricted, you see that three point nine million dollar deficit. So with all that said, we anticipate ending our ending balance in the general fund next year to be at thirty-five and a half million dollars. So shifting gears a little bit, I'm going to take a deeper dive into our revenues and expenses in the next few slides on these pie charts. So just to kind of walk through the format, uh, this, this is our, uh, the different components of our revenue in the general fund. And what I have is the big, bold number in black is, uh, our anticipated revenue for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, the numbers right below in red and green represent the change versus twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, the green represents an improvement, and the red represents, uh, a negative impact, uh, versus, uh, versus the prior year. So, um, starting with LCFF, the big, the largest portion of our pie, uh, in blue there, you see that, uh, it's a hundred and ten million dollars next year, and the two point six million dollar improvement is primarily driven by our two point three percent COLA. Uh, going clockwise, the next, uh, section we have in green is our federal revenue. Uh, it's four point two million dollars, and that's down four hundred thousand dollars versus twenty-four, twenty-five. And that is not because we're getting less revenue. What's happening is, uh, our federal funds, we don't typically, um, the, the federal entitlements aren't typically shared in advance. We typically assume that we're going to be flat next year to the current year, but in the current year, we had more revenue because we had not spent, uh, as much twenty-three, twenty-four entitlements. So we had a larger carryover in our federal, uh, revenue in the current year, primarily Title One, Two, and Three, if that makes sense. So, uh, with our federal revenue, we, this is, sorry, just to go off on a tangent, this kind of gets into kind of geeky accounting, uh, talk, but, um, there's, we have different types of, of funds, uh, you know, between the federal funds and our state funds. Uh, with our federal funds, even though we have, uh, even though we've been allocated the funds, we can't recognize the revenue until the expense is actually incurred. On some of our state programs, uh, you, you know, we don't have to incur like some of the one-time money that I've referenced in the past. We have timing differences in our restricted, uh, funds because, you know, we'll get, we'll get one-time money, let's say, uh, last year, and we'll record that revenue, and then in the, the following year, when we spend it, you'll see a deficit because the revenue has already been parked in our ending fund balance. And then we're just recognizing the expense in the following year. Uh, with the title funds, um, they are, the revenue is recognized when the expense is incurred. So that's what's driving the decrease in revenue, uh, in, in our federal revenue. In our state revenue, uh, in the yellow section there, the, we're at fourteen point four million dollars next year, and it's a decrease of two hundred thousand dollars. This was primarily for the anticipated decrease in ELOP. If you recall, in the May revise, uh, the governor mentioned, um, you know, there's two tiers, or I, I think they call them rates, like rate one and rate two. What they're doing is they are decreasing the threshold, the U P P, the low-income threshold for districts, uh, on rate one, which I think is funded at like twenty-seven hundred dollars a student. And so after, like, with more districts being on rate one, there will be fewer funds theoretically for the remaining districts like us. So I anticipated a ten percent increase, even though just conservatively, um, in our, in our ELOP funds. We typically, uh, get about two and a half million dollars in ELOP funds, uh, annually. So I'm anticipating two point three next year. And, uh, in the red section there, that is our local revenue, uh, at twenty-four point two million dollars. And just to give you, before I get into the, uh, the change versus prior year, um, it's a, it's a huge chunk of our revenue. Um, and we, it's classified as, uh, local just because of, I guess, the account codes we use and how it gets to us, but a big chunk of that is through the SELPA. So of that twenty-four million dollars, uh, I want to say it's like seventeen million dollars is through the SELPA. It's about, it's about eight million dollars, uh, for our state, uh, AB six oh two special ed funds. They actually come through the SELPA, so because of that, how, how it's posted, it comes through as local revenue. Um, the other big portion is our SELPA regional programs. So the revenue we make off of, uh, serving kids outside of our district, uh, it's about seven million dollars. So those, that's a big chunk of our local revenue. So what's happening? The improvement in local revenue of nine hundred thousand dollars is primarily driven by the SELPA tuition. Um, unfortunately, it doesn't really flow down to the bottom line. Our revenue is increasing, but our expense is also increasing at about the same amount. Uh, and what was, what's happening is, uh, a few years back, the SELPA kind of adjusted their, uh, regional program standards. The classes that we, uh, that we facilitate here in the district, as well as other classes, other SELPA classes in the other districts, we added more support in terms of F T E, uh, in terms of nurses, occupational therapists. And because of that, we've been able to charge back what we've incurred, but at the same time, the, our kids that attend other, uh, SELPA classes outside of the district, we have to pay that cost. So it's about, you'll see the million dollars here in the, the revenue pie, but you'll also see the rev- the million dollars increase in the expense in the subsequent slide.
David, can I interrupt and ask you a question?
Sure.
Before I forget?
Yeah.
Uh, where does our, uh, local me- measures and parcel taxes?
Parcel tax also lives in local revenue.
Okay, but it's a small portion.
It's about four and a half million dollars of that twenty-four million.
Oh, I thought you said seventeen and seven.
No, no. So of that twenty-four, it's about seventeen million dollars from special ed.
Uh-huh.
It's about, I think it's about eight in AB six oh two, which is the state special ed funding. And yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry, it's probably about eight, uh, for SELPA tuition.
Oh.
So of that twenty-four million, I want to say it's like, it's sixteen and change just for special ed.
Okay.
And then the parcel tax is another four and a half, so that gets us to twenty. And then there's a lot, there's a lot of other things that go into there. Um...
Is that like the developer funds? Is that different?
No. Um, I want to say that, well, in the budget, we don't budget for, um, we don't budget for, uh, like donations and gift offers, but that's where they also live.
Oh, okay.
And leases and interest?
Yes, and interest, yes.
Developer fees is a different fund.
It's a different fund.
And, uh, lottery is also in there. Lottery is another big one. We, we have about three million dollars in lottery. Um, we, I think it's, yeah, it's like, we have unrestricted lottery and restricted lottery. They all live in the, uh, local revenue. Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, please go.
Oh, I was going to ask, so I did, I understood what you said about, uh, recognizing the federal revenue when you do the expense, kind of. Is that by law? Where does that money stay while it's not expended?
So getting into more accounting treatment discussion, no. So what happens is when, um, uh, you know, J- Jim and I fill out this, this thing called the consolidated application. Uh, it's a web-based tool where we go in and report how much we've spent in terms of Title One, Title Funds. And, uh, that's when they allocate money. But typically, so, that's typically how they do it, but sometimes we do see that they allocate funds earlier. And what happens is, if we're getting, let's say for Title One, if we get more money than we've actually spent, we don't give the money back. We basically, we just classify differently. So instead of revenue, we have an account called deferred revenue. So I'll shift, I'll shift those funds to deferred revenue, and then in the following year when we incur the expense, I'll recognize that revenue and it shifts from deferred to revenue.
Got it.
And our auditors, you know, we have all these fun forums that I get to work on, and they come and of course they look at that and they validate it. Like our auditors, they come kind of throughout the year, but at year end, they're coming back in September when we close our books. And that's when they typically look for things like this, is like revenue recognition, making sure that we incur, like accrue for expenses. It's kind of, yeah, it's the fun accounting stuff that we get to deal with.
But state money actually just comes and then we park it somewhere?
Yes, and, and what happens is you'll, I don't know if you'd be interested in this, but there's a, there's a, a state website, and I forget what it's called, but it's called like a, I think it's called like a resource query. And you go in there and you punch in the resource code and it tells you the proper accounting treatment, like what you're supposed to do. You know, for the state resources, when you punch it in, it'll say fund balance, which means, you know what? If we get it, we don't have to defer it, it's just, we're just going to recognize it as revenue in that year. When it's called, I think it's unearned revenue is the other classification, which is our title funds. We have to make sure that if we have cash and we haven't spent it, we have to defer that revenue.
Okay, thank you.
It basically becomes a liability that if we don't spend it, then we owe it back. The federal government typically only reimburses us for expenses, that's all the reporting that they do. If they happen to pay us too early, we're not allowed to earn interest on it, we have to pay the interest back.
Yes, yeah. So Corinne Ruby, our accounting supervisor, also manages that on a quarterly basis in terms of the interest that we, if we earn any interest on that federal revenue.
And one thing I wanted to clarify, there's, the, the one-time money that we've been talking about is not in the state revenue here. Like what I just mentioned in the other little pot
Yes.
is not in our adopted budget yet, so by first interim, maybe a little earlier, you'll see that one-time money budgeted once we have better information about how much we're getting.
Yes, thanks. Okay. So, moving on to expenses, so same, same format in our expenses. And I'll kind of start off with our salaries and benefits, which are the, the largest portions in blue. The dark blue is our, our salaries and the light blue is benefits. You can see that it's relatively flat, you know, across our salaries and benefits, it's a hundred and thirty-five million dollars of our hundred and sixty million dollar budget. It's about eighty-three, eighty-four percent. So it's pretty consistent with what we've had in the past. And you can see that just, you know, the improvement of seven-hundred thousand dollars in salaries and the increase in expenses of a hundred thousand dollars in our benefits is relatively flat. What's actually happening is, the reason why our salaries show an improvement is because when we compare year over year in twenty-four, twenty-five, we have that three percent one-time salary increase in twenty-four, twenty-five that we don't have budgeted obviously for next year. However, in twenty-five, twenty-six, we have a million and a half for our step-in column. And we also have some staffing adjustments that I've shared. We've had, we've added staff despite the decline in enrollment, and it's kind of funny, I know, we, I think that we had a question. We've added staff and even though, I, I think, you know, against conventional thinking, like, hey, why are we anticipating a decrease in enrollment? A slight decrease in enrollment, but we're adding staff. And it's because we see that the, when we look at our grade span, where our kids in the secondary grades are kind of, you know, that population is slowly declining. But we're adding a lot more TK classes and in our elementary schools. So overall, our enrollment is down a little, but we're having to add additional certificated staff to support those grade spans and the ratios in terms of like, you know, the teacher-student ratio in the lower, in the, the lower grades. And the other thing was that it's, it's outside of this, our nutrition services, because this is just a general fund. But we've had to add a lot of classified staff, primarily for nutrition services, and we've also had to add staff for special education. In terms of, you know, again, kind of, a, a little bit, it was tied to the, the regional program standards. And we also added our roving aids. We, we added five-point-two-five FTEs in roving aids. We added FTE, but we didn't necessarily add any expense, if that makes sense. And I can explain because we have, we have a budget obviously for subs. And like what we saw, we kind of went through a very similar scenario with our roving subs for our teachers a few years back during COVID. And so just to give you an idea, I want to say that, you know, our, our sub budget for teachers is about one-point-two million dollars. And what happened was when we moved to, you know, the concept of roving subs, and we had these positions that we knew, you know, we gave them a commitment, we're like, okay, you've got work on these days for the entire year. We knew we were going to incur two-hundred dollars a day for, for each one of these subs. And so, but when, at the end of the year, when everything materialized, we looked at our sub costs for teachers, and it, there was no, it wasn't an incremental cost. Because what we were doing was, you know, we were always incurring sub costs, teachers are always getting sick, you know, we've got four-hundred teachers, they're bound to get sick. And the roving subs, like having a roving sub at each site, basically just allowed us to have, I, I think, a, a position that was going to, you know, we didn't have to scramble to find a sub. We knew that we were going to have a, a sub in place, and they were already basically replacing an existing cost. And so we're basically going to be piloting the very same concept for the roving subs for our instructional aids. We have a budget for, for subs for instructional aids, and because we're adding roving subs, we're adding FTE, but not the expense, because we already have the expense budgeted. Hopefully that makes sense. Okay. So, so we're relatively flat for salaries and benefits, shifting, going clockwise. Next, we've got our supplies in green there. Our supply is at five-point-six million dollars. That one-point-three million dollar improvement or decrease in supplies is primarily the school site carryover. School sites, when we look at our, their, their carryover, they typically have, I want to say it's, it's been, they've been spending it down. But they have, across our ten school sites, they have about three million dollars in carryover. I think it's probably like two-point, two-point-eight, two-point-seven, two-point-eight million dollars now. We don't, because of the deficit reduction plan, we're not budgeting that for them to spend like we used to. And so that's primarily what is reducing our expense in supplies. Very similar concept in our services. So at fourth point, fourteen-point-six million dollars, that's a decrease of one-point-eight million dollars versus the current year. We did look at where they, they've been, where contracted services have materialized in the last few years. And our budget tends to be very conservative, and I think there's a lot of room in terms of conference and travel, we have contracted services. And a big chunk of this is actually for our special ed program. We have a pretty healthy budget for NPSs, non-public schools, that don't materialize. So I stripped some of that out from the budget, again, kind of going along with our deficit reduction plan.
Question, David.
Yeah.
For the carryover and the supply effect there. How, like, that'll work for us, do we think there's enough carryover there that'll also help next year? Or is that going to be like a one-time fix this year, and then we'll see?
So, so the, the carryovers, I, I guess you can look at it as like one-time money. I think, you know, we've, as a district, we've always, you know, we've shared that the, the whole carryover concept with the school sites, I think they've always, we've always felt like, okay, we're obligated to have that money there for them when they need it. I think this is probably the first time, since I've been here in the seven years, where I didn't budget for that in some form or another. Because, and, and I think that's still probably to be discussed with the executive team in terms of how that, those funds get treated. But because of the deficit reduction plan where we've asked all our school sites, hey, look at cutting five percent, you know, you can't cut five percent. We couldn't, like that, that, we wouldn't see the benefit of the five percent if we gave them the school site carryover that they, that they all have next year.
And to be clear, we're not sweeping the money, it's not going anywhere.
Right.
It's still available for them to use, it's just not budgeted. Typically, we would budget it all, it's there for them to spend, and they don't spend it.
And then at the end of the year, we get this pile of money.
We have this, yeah, we have this positive variance. It also impacts our multi-year projections.
Right.
Yeah.
And so this is just a, a more realistic approach to budgeting that, that helps us in the current year and helps us in the out-years. But the money is still there for them to spend if they need it for some large unusual purchase.
Yes, thanks.
And then, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
And then if they do spend it, we'll see a, a variance on our expenditures from what we budgeted.
Versus budget, yes.
Yes.
Yes, versus our budget, unless, like, you know, like during the year with our first interim and second interim, sometimes like, you know, like if we know and it's approved, I can enhance the budget in first interim or second interim to increase that anticipated expense.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So next we've got our capital outlay in orange. It's at one-point-four million dollars and it is an improvement or a decrease in capital outlay versus the current year. What's happening is, when we compared it to twenty-four, twenty-five, we had a larger budget for the playground structures. So we only have a few playground structures left next, next year to finish, and it, it's just a decrease, it's just a smaller amount in terms of expenses versus the current year. And the last, the last section I have there, the other outgo, this is kind of the transfers in and out of the general fund. So it looks relatively flat, but this is where the increase in the SELPA tuition fee is being reflected. And so the reason why it's not increasing by a million dollars is because in the current year, we have a contribution to deferred maintenance, our Fund Fourteen. So typically in the past, I think this is the first year where we're not making that contribution. Typically every year, you'll, if you guys recall, we would make a contribution of one-point-two million dollars to deferred maintenance fund. And what that typically goes towards is our big summer projects, the roofing, the paving at our school sites. So our deferred maintenance is at a pretty healthy balance, it's about eleven million dollars currently. So we typically spend about a million, you know, when we were making those contributions of one-point-two, we'd spend about a million dollars a summer. So we would, we were always contributing a little more than it cost us, but then we are not making that contribution in twenty-five, twenty-six. And that contribution going out is being offset by the increase in the SELPA tuition next year, and so that's why it looks relatively flat. Okay. Moving on, this is now shifting gears a little. This is a look at the change in fund balance from our twenty-four, twenty-five estimated actuals. You see the deficit of eight million dollars on the left-hand side, and on the far right, our deficit, our anticipated deficit for twenty-five, twenty-six. Again, just looking at unrestricted general fund. This waterfall chart, I like to, I know, I get a, a lot of people make jokes about my waterfall chart, and I know you probably would get sick of this sometimes. But I think it's a really good way to kind of illustrate when we look at two, two periods, what's actually changing in between to kind of help explain, you know, how we get from one, one year to the next. Starting on the left-hand side, the revenue of two-point-nine million dollars, again, is primarily driven by COLA. Salaries and benefits, again, relatively flat, like I mentioned. You know, we're, again, we have the, we have our three percent one-time off-schedule increase in twenty-four, twenty-five being offset by the step-in column and the benefit cap increases next year. And supplies and services, again, this is a little redundant, but this is, the improvement is, again, tied to us not budgeting for the school site carryover and kind of in line with our deficit reduction plan. When we look at our capital outlay year over year, on the unrestricted side, so the playgrounds were on the restricted budget, it's relatively flat, but we are spending money here. We're just budgeting, we're budgeting the same amount, it's about six-hundred thousand dollars year over year for two new school buses. So we still have that rollout plan. And again, it's being funded by the transportation reimbursement program that was implemented a few years ago from the state. It was additional funding for, for us that allowed us to implement this bus replacement plan. And I think by twenty-thirty-five, we'll basically have, we would have gone through our fleet of buses and to make sure that all our buses have seat belts that are required by twenty-thirty-five. Transfers of five-hundred thousand dollars, the improvement there is, this one's going to be a little tricky. But I'll start off, I'll try to do my best to explain the variance. In twenty-five, twenty-six, again, we have, these are, these are the incoming and outgoing transfers to the general fund. So in twenty-five, twenty-six, this is the one-point-nine million dollars that I mentioned earlier, four-hundred thousand for retiree benefits and a million and a half to make sure we meet the three percent reserve requirement. So that's, that's for twenty-five, twenty-six. In the current year, we have a net incoming transfer in of one-point-four. So that's why it's five-hundred thousand dollars better next year. But just to explain, the net incoming for the current year of one-point-four is made up of, again, transfers from, from Fund Twenty for the three percent off-schedule increase. If you recall, when, when the board approved that three percent off-schedule increase, we anticipated funding that through Fund Twenty. The one-time, this is the one-time thing, we were going to fund it through Fund Twenty, that's about two-point-four million dollars. And that is offset by the outgoing contribution to Fund Fourteen, the deferred maintenance of one-point-two. So that gets us to the one-point-four for the current year roughly, versus the incoming one-point-nine for next year. So that's why it's, it's an improvement, because we're anticipating five-hundred thousand dollars more coming in from Fund Twenty next year than the current year. And the contribution, the negative impact of seven-hundred thousand dollars is primarily tied to anticipated increase in our special ed program. And with that said, that kind of gets us from the eight-million-dollar deficit to the three-point-nine-million-dollar deficit in our unrestricted general fund next year. All right, so this is a look at our enrollment and attendance rates. You can see here, we've got the last ten years of actuals in terms of enrollment. The enrollment is the, the bars. The actualized enrollment is the darker bars on this chart. You can see that the twenty-five, twenty-six and the two out-years, that's just our projection for our enrollment. And, and the scale for enrollment is on the left-hand side, on the right-hand side, that percentage scale is related to the, the line, that is our attendance rate. The one thing I wanted to call out on here was that in addition to the slight decline in enrollment, we're anticipating a, a decline in enrollment of about forty-nine kids next year. But you can see that the, on the red line, our attendance rate increased in twenty-four, twenty-five. Our most recent P-two ADA that was reported was an improvement, and I, I want to say that that was definitely attributed to Dr. Tung and the absence recovery program that was implemented and piloted this year. So we're anticipating that, hopefully that attendance rate is going to be flat going forward and hopefully maybe a little higher. But we're kind of back to where we were in the past, we used to, you know, prior to COVID, we were at ninety-seven and a half percent in terms of attendance. Since COVID, it took a dip, we were at, we lost about a percentage point in our attendance. So we're hoping, you know, that'll continue to improve. And based off of the decline in enrollment, we're anticipating that we're going to be funded off of our current year ADA. Again, with, with LCFF, we're funded off of the higher of the current or prior year, or the average of the last three years, whichever is the highest. Right now, based off of the, our projections, the funding is based on twenty-four, twenty-five for next year.
So David, just to clarify, we believe we'll be funded on the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, in twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yes, yes, sorry, yeah. Because, because of the attendance rate. Now, if the absence recovery program improves and we go up to like, let's say ninety-eight percent, it'll likely be, you know, we could be funded off of our twenty-five, twenty-six attendance. And hopefully that's the case, yeah.
Do they decide that or do we decide that?
The, the FICMAT calculator decides for us, and it's always the highest funded option.
Right, they pick the highest one, so they just run it all the ways and they land on.
It's, I mean, it's David who plugs in the numbers, but it's based on a lot of actual numbers.
Yeah, so, so, you know, obviously for the budget, we have a model that I can play with and I put in the numbers, and then we anticipate, we, we have an idea as to what we're going to, what, what we'll be at. And then when Corinne Ruby, I'll say, on, on our team, she works with Grace Camacho, you know, they, they report, we actually punch in our ADA in P-one and P-two, and then the file that FICMAT maintains for us, the model, will actualize it based off of what's reported. So then we'll see, yeah, and it's always obviously the highest of the three ADA options, funded options. And so on this next slide, this one is one of the ones where it may look a little redundant, this was the the budget enhancement, present, pulled from the budget enhancement presentation that I shared back in May. So at a very high level, this is, you know, we, just to, just to recap, for our budget enhancements, we kind of look at it in our, based, in our general fund, based off of like the unrestricted and restricted funds and whether they are ongoing or one-time. Starting on the left-hand side, you can see that it looks a little odd because we actually have an enhancement that's negative, but of course that is again, due to the deficit reduction plan. We've got our step-in column, benefit cap increases, staffing adjustments, the increase in our property and liability. And all of that is offset by the three point three million dollars in our deficit reduction plan, which took that enhancement negative for our unrestricted ongoing. The unrestricted, I'm sorry, the unrestricted ongoing. The unrestricted one-time enhancement of one point four million dollars, that is tied to the MOU or the three collaboration days we have. We have that as one time because it's tied to an MOU that we renew annually. So it's not technically an ongoing increase. The restricted ongoing of a hundred thousand dollars, that is tied to a slight, I, I think it was a portion of a psych that we increased to help support the new SDC class, special day class. And we also had a reclassification of a maintenance position. The five hundred thousand dollar increase in the restricted one-time, again, tied to the playground structures, I think it was at Camino and Highland Oaks. And on the next slide, again, this is also something we've shared previously with the budget enhancement presentation. But this is a, just, just a look at our ongoing revenue and expenses in the unrestricted general fund. So again, we've got our LCFF revenue at two and a half million dollars, step-in column. All of this is, I, I want to say it's a lot, pretty redundant from what I've shared. The one thing I just wanted to call out is the COLA. We have, you can see there, middle way through those charts, through those bars on this chart. The two hundred and seventy thousand dollar expense, this was, this was actually part of our deficit reduction plan. But this is something that Derek felt strongly about. And just as a reminder, what we, what we had in the deficit reduction plan was that a quarter percent of the COLA, in the LCFF COLA, was gonna go towards helping to reduce our deficit spend. So we wanted to show that as an expense of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And again, with all the revenue and expenses offset, you see in the, the large green bar on the far right with other, that is our deficit reduction plan that kind of helps us maintain an improvement in our ongoing revenue and expense impact to the general fund. Okay. Now, this is a, a look at the general fund trend. Over the last, actuals for the last six years, we've got our estimated actuals in the current year, our budget and the two out years. The, the one thing I wanted to call out on here is, again, you know, our goal with this or my goal with this slide is just to show that the, on the, the second out year in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, the green portion of the bar, which represents the ending fund balance for our unrestricted general fund, meets the three percent reserve requirement, which is typically around five million dollars. So we definitely, you know, we definitely meet that. We're at seven million dollars in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. But, you know, it is, we're getting there with a lot of contributions from other funds. So what is reflected in here in terms of contributions is I just wanted to share in twenty-five, twenty-six, as I, as I mentioned, we have one point five million dollars coming from fund twenty. In twenty-six, twenty-seven, we actually have two point five million dollars incoming to make sure we meet our three percent reserve, one point five million coming from fund twenty and another million dollars coming from fund forty point two, our tech reserve. So when we look at our budget and the two out years, there, there is no contribution for budgeted for twenty-seven, twenty-eight because we didn't need it. But for the budget year and the two out years, that is collectively four million dollars of contributions from other funds into the general fund. Yeah. And, and so that's what gets us to the, you know, we, we obviously, thankfully, we have healthy reserves in those funds that allow us to do this. But that, you know, I just wanted to call that out in terms of us drawing down in our reserves. And hopefully, obviously with the deficit reduction plan over the next few years, you know, and I, I want to say that with those contributions, like what we did in twenty-four, twenty-five, I think in our twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we did budget more contributions from fund twenty, but as things materialize and if things get better, those contributions won't be necessary and we won't make those contributions. And hopefully that's the case. But again, for, for, for the county and the state, in order for us to show that, you know, we remain solvent and for them to approve our budget, we have to reflect these contributions incoming. And lastly here, I've got, this used to be, I, I used to call this like the feel-good slide because this looks at all our funds across the district. So you can see that we are, this is a little skewed because the biggest piece of the pie now is our, the building fund twenty twenty-four is the measure AS bond, those bonds that we recently issued of seventy million dollars. It's kind of skewing our number. You see that across all our funds. We anticipate ending next year with a hundred and twenty point five million dollars. And I won't go through each one. I'll just kind of touch on the, the ones with notable changes. So you can see the dark blue there. That's our general fund and, and we've kind of, we've kind of walked through that. Next, we have, as I kind of, I'll go clockwise, just to mention the cafeteria fund, you know, we've been doing pretty good with fund thirteen. We're anticipating, we're, we're budgeting a break even, but I think we're, we're doing a little better than that. Just, we had a, we had a meeting this morning with Kathleen Ashworth, just to go through her monthly financials. And year to date so far, we're at, we were profitable by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a great story. And I think that's a little conservative. We still have some improvements that we anticipate coming in June. So that was through May. Those, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was through May. Yes.
When we do this chart next time, can we put the fund number as well as the fund name?
Oh, sure.
Cause a lot of times you guys refer to the
Number.
Like twenty.
Yes.
And it's here, but you know.
Our goal is to always use the names.
Yeah, okay. Well, if, if we had both, that would be helpful.
Yes, definitely.
Thanks.
I know. I, I, I try to, I try to keep it look, to, I try to keep it clean without so much text, but I can definitely do that. Yeah. Cause I know we tend to use like fund numbers and then we use the description and it might throw you off. The deferred maintenance fund, we're anticipating that decreasing because we're not making a contribution next year. We're just anticipating expenses. The retiree benefits fund, again, this is fund twenty in yellow here, in the yellow portion of the pie. It's a decrease of one point eight million dollars. You know, like I mentioned earlier, we anticipate making a contribution of one point nine million dollars. It's one point eight here because we actually, I, I try to account for interest that we earn. So we do get some interest revenues. And the, the big portion of the pie in orange there, the, the building twenty twenty-four measure AS fund, the decrease of thirty million dollars, that is tied to our big projects for the solar projects and the facilities projects at the high school. The capital facilities fund in red, this is fund twenty-five. It's a decrease of one point five million dollars. Again, that is anticipated. That's the anticipated cost for the remaining cost tied to the portables at our elementary schools. Next, we've got the, the capital outlay, that, that's fund forty, that's relatively flat. Lastly, we have the technology reserve in gray. That is the fund forty point two and it's a decrease of one point nine million dollars. And we budget two million dollars for our annual Chromebook replacements, offset by some interest revenue. Any, any questions on, on the fund balances? Okay. And I think that concludes budget presentation. So we asked that the board approve the adopted budget. Again, as I mentioned, you know, in our, in our budget, we show that we remain solvent and we're able to meet our financial obligations in the budget year and the two out years. Be happy to take any questions.
If we were not able to meet those three percent reserve obligation in the out years, is that when districts are required to do a fiscal stabilization plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and I think there's, there's probably more that goes into it. I think the first thing is, I, I want to say that, well, there's also some options that we have with like, I think they call them like trans, like loans from other funds. Like I think they, they've talked about it in the past where you can take a loan from like a bond fund, right? Like funds that you don't, don't typically go into for operations, you know, like thank God we're not in that situation, but those are options, I think, that Laco has shared in the past that other districts have exercised. But I think worse, like worst-case scenario, I think, I forget, I think it was, I don't want to call it some of the districts, but there are certain districts in the, the state that, you know, once they're so poorly run, FICMAT comes in and they take over.
Right.
That, yeah, that's at the very end. You, if, if you can't meet your financial obligations either in the out years or in the budget years, that's where you have a qualified or a negative certification at your adoption or your interim reports. That's when the, the county gets more and more involved in your finances. And if that continues, if you become insolvent, then yes, the state takes over and FICMAT steps in and the county assigns someone to run your district and then we all lose decision-making authority. The, the trans that you were talking about are actually more of a cash flow issue rather than a fund balance issue.
Is that like when they say they're gonna pay you, but they don't actually and then districts
The deferrals, yeah.
Issues where they can't pay their bills because they haven't gotten the money that they're
That's right.
Been allocated, but they're holding back for timing stuff.
Typically, most districts go out for trans like in November, like right as cash dips really low before you get your December property tax payments. And then you flush again and by February you pay all your money back. We're fortunate, because they look at cash at the fund level and we have reserves in ending fund balances on the restricted side, that counts towards our cash balance. So we don't have to worry about that. Yeah. So if you can't meet the three percent reserve, then you have a qualified financial report or a negative financial report if it's in the budget year. And then all kinds of other things start to happen.
Yeah. And I think, I think with our interim reports, you know, we typically have a first interim and a second interim. I think when you don't have a positive certification, there's a third interim. So they want another update on your budget.
June thirtieth. Yeah.
I'm kind of excited about the, the nutrition services area based on like where we were like five years ago.
Yeah.
It's a huge, I mean, I'm sure some of that's tied to the universal meals.
Hundred percent.
A lot of it because we're doing so many more, but oh my gosh, what a turnaround.
Yeah. When you, when you double the number of meals that you're getting reimbursed for, it only increased expenses by twenty percent or twenty-five percent. That's where you start to see that improvement.
Yeah. I think it's like, obviously the fixed costs stay, stay fixed, but we're, you know, the variable costs are minimal and we're getting to leverage that fixed cost with the incremental like reimbursement per meal.
Cause I remember we were having to like
Make a contribution.
Yes.
Contributions.
Yes.
At the beginning of COVID. And I'm sorry, just to go back for a minute to your, your question, Raymond, the fiscal stabilization plans are prepared and board-approved and submitted to the county to avoid going below that three percent reserve. So if you can find ways to make either budget reductions or, you know, or expense reductions or revenue increases so that your ending fund balance stays above three percent, then you're okay. You have to be able to make those decisions yourself. Like you can't say like, oh, we're gonna come out of insolvency because we're gonna increase our lease revenue by three, three million dollars. Like it has to be realistic. It has to be under your control. Even with the fiscal stabilization plan, if then you fall below that three percent, that's where you get into the qualified and negative certifications. Sorry.
Got it. So there's a series of steps.
Yes, they're, yeah.
It wouldn't be a surprise.
No, it's not a surprise to anyone. And one of the first calls goes to FICMAT. And, and they'll come in and help and then eventually someone from the county gets assigned. And literally they can override any decision that, that the board makes or that administration makes. So it's not a good place.
But, you know, we have whatever it is, school five, fiscal maintenance responsibility.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Hopefully we never get there.
Yeah. We, we, we will not get there. We'll never be there. I, I mean, and sorry, just the last thing I'll say about this, like we, we had a conversation about these ending fund balances and in the out years and we are making contributions, but we kind of left them at a minimal level of contribution. And I think, I mean, I'm guessing maybe you're kind of reacting to that where you're used to seeing ten or fifteen or twenty million dollars in fund balance on the unrestricted side, but now you're only seeing whatever, five or six million. And so, yeah, that is, that is a change. Yeah. But I, I asked David to do that on purpose and we talked as an executive team about that, like, yeah, that, we're gonna take this more realistic approach to our budgeting. And so that's what it looks like. And that's why I also asked David to call out all these contributions that we're making in the budget and out years. Yeah, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Yeah, I had a question. So I can understand like deferred maintenance is probably, like the, the contribution is required, right? Like an annual contrib, no?
Two types of maintenance.
Okay.
Deferred maintenance is a different fund.
Okay.
It's fund fourteen. We're no longer required to contribute to deferred maintenance.
Okay.
In the past, we were required to contribute one percent. We continue to do that, but by choice, we've now chosen to stop doing that. Within the general fund on the restricted side is the restricted maintenance where we are required to contribute three percent of general fund expenses.
Okay. So that's buried in the general.
It's buried in the restricted general fund. Yeah.
And I can understand like the building twenty twenty-four fund here is, I mean, that's a measure, right? So it's by law, we have to keep that separate.
Yes.
How do we determine what is a good amount to keep in like fund twenty, the retiree benefits, technology? Like, and we're pulling from them and you're saying that we're gonna contribute, but then may, may, depends on how things work out throughout the year, right? Yeah. How do we determine what the right amount to have?
Yeah. How we don't go below what we need, right?
Yes. Sorry. Complicated question, I know.
Can I say that's the art of budgeting?
Yeah. Yeah. There's no, I guess there's no like requirement. And I think it's just based off of our comfort level.
I guess that, that was my question. Are there legal requirements for any of these other than?
No.
Okay. Other than building twenty twenty-four, basically.
As we go clockwise through it, deferred maintenance is now, let's call it a locally controlled, a locally defined fund. Most districts don't even have the deferred maintenance fund anymore. Retiree benefits, the, that fund, fund twenty, we do have an actuarial report
Yes.
that tells us that our liability is twenty million dollars.
Yes.
So to answer your question, I would love to fund that at twenty million dollars to completely cover our liability. No, no district, I believe in the state of California has done that. So then it's a question of, like, we've used this as a reserve during the recession. We used it to support the general fund like we're doing now. After the recession, we replenished it. Now we're using it again. So, you know, I don't, I don't, there is no number. The building fund is, is entirely restricted. Capital facilities is the developer fee fund. That is also restricted for facilities projects for growth. And that's why we're using it for the classrooms at the elementaries. The, the capital outlay and the technology are both, they're fund forty. The, the sub-funds are different, but they're fund forty, which is a, a special reserve for capital outlay. Again, there are many districts out there that don't have that money at all. Originally, some of the money was funded into this fund forty when we sold a California street property across from First Ave. So I don't know that anybody, Melinda, do you, yeah, it's, so it goes way back. And districts use fund forty as a, a facilities reserve. So what we do in the capital outlay portion of fund forty, we've used that to fund the track replacement, the field replacement, and we get money back from the city that we put back in that fund. You know, as things come up that we need to do, we'll use this money to fund that. For example, I was at Hugo Reed Park today talking about the fence and that's like a hundred thousand dollar project. We're taking it from here. We could use deferred maintenance for that purpose, but you know, Arcadia has historically had healthy reserves and so we've had these funds here. When I can, I replenish the capital outlay portion of fund forty just because, you know, somebody asks for, I'm not pointing at you, but somebody asked for something and it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars when you're talking about facilities or a million dollars very quickly. when you're talking about facilities or a million dollars very quickly. The technology reserve, that's been there for a long time as well. When we started with the one-to-one Chromebooks, we used that money. And we were also, as we were receiving one-time funds post-recession and when we were getting LCFF gap funding, if you guys remember that, we would be putting money into that tech reserve. Because in the general fund, we do not have an ongoing budget for Chromebook replacement and that's a million, a million and a half dollars a year. And so you can see there's six million dollars there and you can do the math how many years that would cover. And so whenever there's an opportunity, you know, myself and my predecessor, we're always, and David, we're always looking for ways to replenish those funds. And, and it's a conversation, like, so to answer, in a very long-winded way to answer your question, there's no right number. It's what we can get away with and what they will allow us and, and what we, we can share with you all and have these conversations.
Okay, and then the fence you were talking about, why wouldn't that come out of the Measure AS money?
It's not a bond project, it, it, it's actually in the city park.
Oh, okay.
It's sort of a joint use project.
Okay.
And so it's not an approved bond project.
And you said that when we get money from the city, it goes into the capital outlay fund?
So for example, in 2020 or so, when we redid the, the track at the high school, part of our joint use agreement with the city is that they reimburse us or they pay for a third of that track replacement and, and also maintenance.
Oh, so basically a hundred percent came out and then one-third came back.
Correct, we paid for it, we got the total cost, we sent them a bill for a third.
Got it.
The invitational pays for a third and we split the field with the city fifty-fifty.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
I'm going to hang out.
Could I get a motion for this item, please?
I move to adopt the Arcadia Unified School District Budget 2025-2026. I'll second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Vargo, seconded by Mrs. Yee. Comments or discussion from the board?
Just thank you.
Yes, thank you. I know there's a lot of, I, I mentioned the fiscal stabilization plan because I read that LAUSD is in the midst of that and they're anticipating additional cuts and layoffs and a lot of other districts are doing layoffs and are under those plans, so I'm just very thankful for all of your proactive measures with the deficit reduction plan and-
I think LA Unified's deficit next year is larger than our entire budget.
Yes, yes, I think it's, um-
Four hundred million or something?
Yeah, four hundred, four hundred million, yeah. And but out of like an eighteen point eight billion, billion dollar budgets. All right. Thank you, everybody. What's, I will call for, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Item C, Resolution Number 242534, Education Protection Account for Fiscal Year 2025-2026. Back to you, Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, thank you. Resolution 242534 is an annual resolution we bring to the board for approval regarding the Education Protection Account or EPA. The EPA was established in 2012 through Proposition 30 and later amended in 2016 through Proposition 55 to extend temporary personal income tax increases on earnings above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The funds provide school districts with general purpose state aid. The EPA does not provide new revenue to the district, it is a component of the LCFF revenue. Each, each year, we are required to disclose how the EPA funds are spent at a regular board meeting. The EPA funds cannot be spent on administrator salaries or benefits. For 2526, we project the EPA funds will be approximately one point seven million dollars and recommend that the funds be spent on teacher salary and benefits, salaries and benefits.
Questions? All right, can we get a motion, please?
I move to adopt slash approve Resolution 242534, the Education Product Account for Fiscal Year 2526. I'll second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Chavez, seconded by Mrs. Vargo. Comments, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, for the next four action items, we will be considering the recommended approval of employment agreements for four executive positions, the superintendent, assistant superintendent of business services, assistant superintendent of educational services and assistant superintendent of human resource services. Government Code Section 54953 states in part in part, prior to taking final action, the legislative body shall orally report a summary of recommendation for a final action on the salaries, salary schedules or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive as defined in subdivision D of Section 3511.1 during the open meeting in which the final action is to be taken. As a result, I'm providing a verbal summary of the employment agreements for each contract. This is going to take a while. So for item D, approval of employment agreement for the superintendent. The employment agreement presented tonight is for a period commencing July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029. The annual salary is three hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars for the 2025-26 school year and shall be entitled to receive the same percentage increase for the other management salary schedules. The superintendent will receive annual stipends of one thousand dollars for his doctorate degree and six thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for longevity. The superintendent will receive an annual contribution of an annuity in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. The superintendent shall receive all health and welfare benefits provided to certificate management employees of the district, including twenty days of sick leave. The district shall provide direct payment for up to four professional associations and reimbursement for a service club as well as expenses for regional, state or national conferences, seminars, meetings or hearings. The agreement includes a work year of two hundred and twenty-four days and twenty-four vacation days with an optional fifteen day vacation payout. So I need a motion for this item.
I move to approve the employment agreement for the superintendent. I'll second.
A motion is made by Mrs. Chavez, seconded by Mrs. Yee. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Item E, approval of employment agreement for the assistant superintendent business services. The employment agreement presented tonight is for a period commencing July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. The annual salary is two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars for the 2025-26 school year and shall be entitled to receive the same percentage increase for other management salary schedules. Assistant Superintendent Business Services shall receive all health and welfare benefits, including twelve days of sick leave provided to classified management employees of the district. The district shall provide direct payment for up to three professional associations, one community service club dues and up to two memberships in district affiliated organizations such as PTA and AEF. The agreement includes a work year of two hundred and twenty-four days and twenty-two vacation days with an optional ten day vacation payout. I need a motion for this item, please.
I'll move to approve the employment agreement for the assistant superintendent of Business Services. I'll second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Yee, seconded by Mrs. Vargo. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Item F, approval of employment agreement for the assistant superintendent Educational Services. The employment agreement presented tonight is for a period commencing July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. The annual salary is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars for the 2025-26 school year and shall be entitled to receive the same percentage increase for other management salary schedules. The assistant superintendent Educational Services will receive annual stipends of one thousand dollars for his doctorate degree and two thousand ninety for longevity. The assistant superintendent Educational Services shall receive all health and welfare benefits, including twelve days of sick leave provided to certificate management employees of the district. The district shall provide direct payments for up to three professional associations, one community service club dues and up to two memberships in district affiliated organizations such as PTA and AEF. The agreement includes a work year of two hundred and twenty-four days and twenty-two vacation days with an optional ten day vacation payout. I need a motion for this item, please.
I move to approve the employment agreement for the assistant superintendent Educational Services. I'll second it.
Motion was made by Mrs. Chavez, seconded by Mrs. Vargo. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Last one. But not least. Item G, approval of employment agreement for the assistant superintendent Human Resource Services. The employment agreement presented tonight is for a period commencing July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. The annual salary is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars for the 2025-26 school year and shall be entitled to receive the same percentage increase for other management salary schedules. The assistant superintendent Human Resource Services will receive annual stipends of one thousand dollars for his doctorate degree and two thousand ninety dollars for longevity. The assistant superintendent Human Resource Services shall receive all health and welfare benefits, including twelve days of sick leave provided to certificate management employees of the district. The district shall provide direct payment for up to three professional associations, one community service club dues and up to two memberships in district affiliated organizations such as PTA and AEF. The agreement includes a work year of two hundred and twenty-four days and twenty-two vacation days with an optional ten day vacation payout. I need a final motion for this item, please.
I move to approve the employment agreement for the assistant superintendent Human Resource. I'll second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Chavez, seconded by Mrs. Yee. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right, H items removed, consent, consent agenda, no items were removed from the consent and agenda and we are two information items. A, report on Arcadia Unified Local Indicators for California Dashboard Public Release, Dr. Forsen.
Thank you, Andrea, for preparing this. I know you worked really hard the last couple of weeks, so take it away.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight to review the local indicators with you. So what we do is we share the local indicators that are based on the priority areas of the local control funding formula and we focus on priorities one, two, three, six and seven. And so we'll go ahead and start with priority one. And priority one relates to basic services and there's three areas that we report on in this area. The first is the teacher assignment monitoring outcome data. This data is fairly new and it's released, this is only the second year that we've had to report it in this way before we used to do miss assignments. And so we share this data with you. It is based on 2223 data because it's new. The state is very behind in their reporting and getting this updated, so I'll turn it over to Kevin to explain a little bit more on that.
Oh, sure, we just wanted to point out that there's a column that says incomplete, which is very confusing to us because we get audited each year by the county credentially. And of course, in the 2223 year, year, we submit all documentation, we get clearance that, you know, zero miss assignments and then it shows up in a report three years later that there were, that some things are incomplete. So it's, there may be some new data systems that they're using that aren't communicating with each other. We're not really sure, we probably have to dig into this, but it's just very confusing to us. I just wanted to make certain that our teachers, there were zero miss assignments, our teachers are highly qualified and we comply with everything needed in the assignment monitoring process, so.
Could, could it be that those are preliminary credential versus clear?
I don't know, that doesn't seem to be the case with us.
Yeah, the numbers don't line up that way either. That's strange.
Yeah.
And so it's a new data system, so they report, Stephanie was telling us they report too, is KELSAAS, which is a, is a new system and so I think, you know, with anything new, especially when it comes to collecting the data statewide, it takes, it takes a couple of years to really get it under control and so I think they're, they're still figuring things out.
We're good on our end, to be clear.
Yeah.
Appreciate the clarification.
Yes.
So the other two areas for priority one that we also report on are the access to curriculum-aligned instructional materials and so this is really how many Williams complaints we have and we do not have any for the 2425 school year. And the other piece, that third piece, is the Williams Act Facilities Inspection Tool. So we're closely with Gabriel Santos in getting this data. This data is collected in December of every year and we have a very high rating and that's due to just how good our FMOT team is and just the generosity of our community with the bonds and being able to really maintain and keep up our facilities. So local priority two is really about the California academic standards and where we are in our implementation of these standards. And so what we do is we fill out a self-reflection tool. When we fill out this tool, we're really evaluating where we are in implementing standards for TK-12 and that can be a challenge because, you know, it's going to look different for every grade level. So we're looking at elementary, middle and high school. And so we, we base it on the core academic standards and really what we have to evaluate is where we're, where are we in buying instructional materials? Where are we in implementing our policies and reflecting on our programs? Where are we in our professional development training and the support that we're providing to our administrators and our teachers in implementing those standards? And so here we have where we are in every area. And we are looking at some ELD curriculum at the middle school level and we are still looking at history and social science, so that's why we put initial implementation on those. So local priority number three, the parent engagement, I like this one because I like to, I go back on Facebook and look at all of the pictures, try to remember everything that we do. And so for this one, we also fill out another self-reflection tool and write some narratives and we're really focusing on three areas. The first is how we build relationships with staff and families. And in this area, I really like to highlight the superintendent's welcome that Dr. Van Oostal does. I really think it's really powerful in really welcoming all our newest families, getting them acclimated to the school, you know, letting them know what they should look out for and it's, it's really well-attended and so it's a great start for those families just to really have time with Dr. Van Oostal and just get to know our district. And so we also have our registration days, our, each school's website has so many postings and informations about just events, our back-to-school nights, our open house, all of the events that our PTA hosts with, you know, our family fun nights and then everything that Lauren and Ryan do with the DCI interns and making sure that people know what's going on in our district. For the second part of that, that's seeking input from the families and staff. And we have our, we continue to have our LCAP advisory educational engagement and we do a good job of really including different, different families from all of our school sites and making sure they have input and we really take their input to heart. You know, we make adjustments as necessary as they give us input at those meetings. We have our DELAX with our English Advisory Committees. You know, this year we got feedback from our parents with that, with that group and they told us that our English learners really are receptive to phone blasts instead of email blasts. And so we started sending phone blasts out for our ELAX and we've gotten a much higher attendance rate there. So it's really good to have these committees and these meetings to be able to get that direct feedback from them. And so everything that I know Dr. Mahoney does with her sped breakfast and then the PTA council meetings that we have are all ways of getting and gathering feedback. On that third area, the building partnerships for student outcomes, we continue to have our interest-based bargaining with all three associations. I think it was this year that we're all three now, right? And our, our passing of Measure AS, that faith that the community gives in passing that bond and then just the continued partnerships that we have with Rotary, PTA- And then just the continued partnerships that we have with Rotary, PTA, the Masons, the Lions, and the Women's Clubs. All of the scholarships that they that we see that they provide to our students for graduation and um all of the awards that they give. So for local priority six, this is um school climate. And so this is our first year where we're not we're not reporting that Allen Daily data, and we're focusing on the Healthy Kids Survey here. And so we collect this data from our fifth, seventh, and ninth grade um students, and they break it up by elementary and secondary. So what we have here is you can see how um what percentage we've had every year since two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-one, we didn't collect the data. Um, but that orange vertical line is the state average line. So you can see at the elementary, um, school connectedness is at seventy-seven percent. Our state average is at um seventy-three percent, approximately seventy-three. So we're four percent higher than um the state average for school connectedness. And then perceived school safety, uh, we are at eighty-three percent, and the state average is at approximately seventy-eight percent. And that's elementary. And what they're having us do in the write-up for this is also include demographic information. So how each demographic group is also reporting these numbers. Um, at secondary, uh, where for school connectedness, we are at sixty-six percent. And I've always noticed that secondary, these percentages will drop, but we're still much higher than what the state average is. Because that state average is at fifty-five percent. So it's still really good to see our kids have that sense of connectedness with school. And then that perceived school safety is at seventy-seven percent, whereas the state average is at fifty-three percent. So local priority uh number seven, this is another narrative that we write, and this is access to a broad course of study. And so here we look at multiple measures. We look at the um appropriate teacher assignments. We review Power School data for our graduation rates and course completions. And so all of our students have access to a broad course of study. Um, what foothills did this year in really evaluating their needs and adding that second elective to their schedule is an example of how we continue to reflect and look at um what we can do to to allow opportunities for our students. Um, barriers. Some some of the barriers we encounter are really individualized. So individual student needs, unique needs that kids have, that may not give them access, but we do look at those at an individual basis. Um, our actions are that we will continue with our MTSS journey. The evaluation of data has really been beneficial, and then um just continue to evaluate our practices and looking at that data. Thank you. Any questions? Alright. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Mendez. Okay, department updates. I think we are two.
Alright, thank you, Mr. President, and uh this will serve as updates since our last board meeting. And we'll start with Business Services. Dear Castle.
Okay. And this will be a Facilities Projects update by Business Services. And uh Tony Barrios is taking some time off this week, otherwise it would be him doing it, and he'll be back, I think at the second meeting in July to provide the next update. So we'll start with high school. I think I skipped one. Thank you. Okay, so the locker room, modernization, and of course, the interim housing for the locker rooms. First couple of pictures here are where we're putting the interim housing on that, I think what we call the multipurpose field out there by the basketball courts and the tennis courts. Uh, but just to give you a little information on the 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 whole project itself, um, as you recall, this is our lease lease-back project. We're doing it with Erickson Hall for construction. Uh, and then the construction management company is uh RCM, Roberts Construction Management. One of the benefits of doing this lease lease-back approach was that the the duration of the project has been shrunk down to eight months rather than thirteen or so. Um, this is where the six portables will be placed, um, and that's locker rooms and also some coaches' offices. Uh, okay. Raymond, bring back some memories.
Mine was the one right there.
Yeah, just just the view, not the other senses. But in all, there's about fifteen hundred total lockers for boys and girls that we're replacing with new. So about the the same amount of lockers um are gonna be be there when we're done. And you see those uh open spaces there in the middle? That's sort of where the teams congregate. Uh, part of the new plan is to give them, think a little bit more of a separate space, like a team room within that uh locker room space. These pictures really like, they don't do the showers justice. Like, they actually make them look alright. Like, they don't give you the real, like, I tried to find the worst one, and the like Melinda just takes pictures that are too nice. But, so we kind of went back and forth with the showers. Originally, the original plans were no new showers, and now we've sort of brought them back, but not these like rooms of showers, but individual shower stalls that also serve as uh changing rooms for students if they want. Uh, seven, seven individual showers in the girl's side, uh, nine for the boys. The showers, and I think also the um the restroom areas, will have the terrazzo on the walls, but not on the floor. We're we're moving away from terrazzo on the floor. It just, it doesn't look good and it doesn't hold up well. So instead, we're going with polished concrete, which is what we did at the Holly Ave Building. And that seems to be successful so far. Those are the current changing stalls. Uh, is the coach's office. So uh in the plan, the the coaches or the PE teachers, I should say, get individual offices that are, you know, sort of of a much smaller size. I don't have any pictures of the ASB office, but that's part of the modernization. Uh, and it's gonna be reconfigured so that students can sort of flow in from one side and go out the other side rather than like come in and out of the same room. Uh, and I think it's sort of more of
It's cozy in there.
It's more of a like a north-south flow.
Yeah.
Will be the new layout. Air conditioning is going in in the coaches' offices and the team rooms, but not the big locker room area uh just because of the sheer size of it and also the fact that there's showers in there. Um, but we're making sure that there's heating in there and adequate ventilation with exhaust fans.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah.
And not just like, will there be fan fans just to move the air around? Like, not exhaust fans that gunt it, but like
Well, that that should then draw in the air.
Just thinking of the breeze you get from like an overhead fan. I don't know.
We could put one of the fans in that we have over at the maintenance yard.
Yeah, the big ones.
DAF.
Yeah.
The Wizard of Oz.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't be a hot box, is what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah. Uh, I mentioned the team rooms. Two of them are added to the boy's side and four on the girl's side. Um, and we're also removing the um asphalt in the corridors outside and putting concrete in. And this is just some pictures of how it's been fenced off. Uh, and then the walkways between the gym and the the locker rooms. This is the um, the the trailers for the construction companies. It's out in the the south parking lot, the staff lot at the very southwest corner. Okay, moving on to Baldwin Stalker.
Quick question for you.
Yes.
Uh, will will the showers have hard doors or are they gonna be like um curtains? Just curtains, okay.
We can uh double-check that in in case it's different. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Baldwin Stalker. So in the very southwest corner of the campus, we tore down some old strange huts of some sort. Coach's Cafe. Uh, put in some asphalt, and um these guys showed up one morning very early and like miracle workers backed these big pieces into the the uh, through the middle of campus with with everything that we have there. Uh, when you see all the obstructions that are there, it's just incredible what these guys can do with these trucks. But these are the two classrooms. They come in in two pieces that then fit together. We had to do a fair bit of trenching that comes from the north side of campus uh up by the library or so. Yeah, and it went all the way down through the middle of the playground to out in front of the the portables, and that's for utilities. And you can see that, I I was shocked at how deep they were. They're like four feet deep. It's really incredible. And then, so they, I think they put in a base of that uh concrete and then laid in the the the
The conduit.
Conduit, thank you, for all the utilities to go through. Camino Grove. Let's jump over to the playground. Um, so replacing the existing playground on the on the the main campus. And I have a bit of a a time lapse here. So you can see that they're starting to put in the tiles, continuing to add them. Um, and we're putting a shade structure over this. It's not integrated, but just separate because that seems to be the easier and faster approach now with DSA approval. Uh, in the background are those new portables in this picture. Those are the new swings.
Did the playgrounds get moved?
No.
It's just the portable, portables got put in front of them?
Correct.
Okay.
The pu- the new portables are just east of the existing row of portables. They sort of added to that row of portables. It's just north of this playground, and it was a really tight, tight squeeze to get them in there, but they did. And there they are. So to the right, that green fence on the right is where the playground is.
Okay.
So they had to wheel these things in between the existing portables and the playground. And you can still see it's in the two pieces there. And then they put them together. And the existing portables are in the background there going back.
I mean, because I'm familiar with this, there was a pathway kind of that where the kids went down to to get to the to the playground.
Yes.
Is, are they getting rerouted, or do they go in between the old portables and the new portables now?
No, it's the same pathway. So the portables are just to decide to get that address out.
So the kids will just kind of go in between the portables to get to the, okay.
Or around to the east. Like towards the daycare program this way.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Speaking of trenching, this one was a doozy. Um, so not only did we have to trench for um the utilities, but we also had to add a fire hydrant on our campus because these portables were too far away from the existing water source. So that goes all the way from the north end of campus down that sort of eastern driveway and across the playground. Where and where does the, where did the fire hydrant actually end up?
At the end of the asphalt, near the field, so right where the the yard is.
Yeah. And I think it was Camino Grove where it was really sandy, and so the the trench was collapsing and some of the blacktop cracked and collapsed. And so you can see on the left there that they had to shore it up. And you can see the guy in there, like just how deep these things are. It's really amazing. Jumping up to Highland Oaks. So the first thing we had to do was remove the trees. But fear not, we will be adding new trees back in just on the outside of the fence. Um, and you know, the roots were coming up, and so it just, unfortunately, they were in the way. Um, because of um disability requirements, we had to level this all out. And so that's why the trees had to come out. So everything had to be leveled out. And uh they'll continue to work on that. We'll get the playground in. I think the plan is to have that done this summer. And the other playground at Camino on the main section is already done. And I think the last thing I want to say is the the solar, the solar panels. I don't have any pictures of that. But we've uh almost got the complete drawings ready to go to submit to DSA, Division of State Architects. Uh, and our plan is to get those approved in the next few months. Uh, and then I think we start construction sort of at the start of school or just into the beginning of the school year. Uh, and also, we're uh speaking of, we talked about deferred maintenance before, we're doing uh roof replacement at the high school for the F and G rows. And that's currently underway. And that was slightly sidetracked by our our new neighbor in the A row. But that's all boarded up, the the fence is back up, cleared out the classroom, and I think it now looks like nothing happened from the outside. So, and we'll, I think DSA is coming out soon to take a look at that portable, but we, it's, it's a loss. It's a total loss. We can't use it anymore. And that's it. Thank you. Questions?
No, thank you.
I believe we're uh planning on some field trips for uh July eighth. Yeah, all day, just to get out to some of these sites to look at. Alright, moving on to Educational Services, Dr. Forson.
Alright, good evening. Uh, two updates. The first of which, in case you had not heard, uh Daniel Ackings retiring, and tonight will be his last meeting. So that is his update. Thank you, Daniel, for, thanks for going out on fire as we would all expect you to do. Um, and some exciting uh data from the absence recovery program uh that JT ran. So great uh data of our four um ele- participating elementary schools and one elementary middle school. Um, again, this started, uh, I wouldn't say this was the whole year. It took a while to get up and running. Baldwin Stalker had some staffing changes in their office, so that presented some challenges too, so they were very limited. Um, but it looks like uh we're able to recoup about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars uh this year just in attendance recovery. Now, what in running this, what we also found is just in elementary school, um, our students were in school a lot more. So as an example, Holly Avenue, um, two thousand and twenty-three, absences was six thousand, six hundred and four students. And they had one thousand and seventy-four student days from independent study. Remember, we had an independent study program already going. It was three to three days or more. We really ramped it up when the state moved it back to single-day um absences that we can recruit. So they were already doing some, but clearly, you know, so s- around sixty-five hundred absence days, a little over a thousand independent study days. So a lot more kids absent than attendance recovered. In uh two thousand and twenty-four, Holly Avenue had one thousand, six hundred and eighty-four absence days. So that's almost a what, a five thousand absence to the good, but negative. Um, and four thousand, three hundred and sixty-five days recovered. So a, so just in having kids absence less this year, we're also going to get another two hundred and thirty-seven thousand uh dollars. So that's almost, that's a little over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you combine attendance recovery with kids just being in school more um this year. So exciting. We'll be rolling it out to all schools next year. Um, it does require work. This doesn't come without work. Um, and our commitment is to continue to iterate, to refine, to make it as easy as possible for our staff, um, to make it as accessible as possible for our students and our parents. But the preliminary results are are very positive. So that's my report for tonight. So that's my report for tonight.
And we talk a lot about deficit reduction, but the other side of that is raising revenue. Not a lot of areas we can do that, so very proud. Thank you for those numbers. And moving on to human resource services, Dr. Harish.
All right, I'll be brief. I'm just giving an update on enrollment. So things are still looking good. As of today, we had 8,860 students. And on this day last year in our enrollment process, we had 8,815. So up forty-five students from where we were at last year. So I think it's very likely that we'll meet our enrollment target of 9,023. And hopefully we'll either meet or exceed the 9,072 of this past school year. So good news for us and we'll continue to monitor. That's it.
Thank you. All right, moving on to technology and innovation, Greg Zingan.
Evening, everyone. A lot going on in TIS right now, but I'll be brief. As you know, we are continuing our process to get people switched over from Windows because the older Windows devices will be end of support in October. It seems like a lot of other tech companies thought this was a good idea because we found out that some additional equipment we have, like network switches, like servers, are also going to end of support. So we are busy replacing that. The good news is it's not just staff. We in TIS are swapping everything over too, so we're keeping busy with that. The other thing we're working on right now is looking at network infrastructure. For anyone who uses our network, we want you to just connect to the wifi and it works. There's a lot that goes into that. We connect all of our buildings together. So what we're doing is replacing old equipment and figuring out as we head into the bond, what kind of equipment we're going to be able to need to provide the level of support, wifi access, internet access, network access that's expected. Thankfully, we applied for E-rate as we often do, which gives us a significant discount on network equipment. And we're finishing our assessment now so we can order some of that new equipment and get it set up. So busy times, but all is well in TIS.
Thanks very much. And communications, Ryan Ferrin.
Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder that the Patriotic Festival is Saturday. We'll have our booth and hopefully in front of First Ave like usual. Starts at five, goes to nine thirty. It'll have all their usual food trucks and games and all that fun stuff. I have, for those of you participating, we have the signs for your, the walking parade. So we'll bring those there for you. So just stop by the booth, we'll have them there for you. And feel free to work the booth, hang out, and we'll be there all night. But no obligations if you can't make it.
So I'm not sure if you know, but are they staging the drones in the First Ave field for this first ever drone show?
I believe so, yes.
Replacing the fireworks?
Yes.
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's just gonna be something to see.
I think they're still selling seats in First Avenue. You know, so that you can act, you know, have before you could sit there. But they're still gonna do that. And I think they said maybe a tour of, or some sort of, you know, information about the drones.
I think it'd be worth the price of admission just to watch the process of how they stage the drones, set them up, right? That's what I'm interested in.
Yeah.
All right, that's it. All right. Thank you. That concludes our important-
All right. Thank you, Dr. Mendoza. We are to consent items. Can I get a motion for consent items A through K, please?
I'll move to consent items A through K.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Yee, second by Mrs. Chavez. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Pose. Motion carries four zero. Okay, comments of the board. Mrs. Vargo, we'll start with you.
I didn't prepare any comments. Yeah, it's been a long night, so I don't really have any other comments other than it's, thank you for everyone for being here.
Thank you, Mrs. Vargo. Mrs. Yee?
I only have one report. I attended the AF meeting. Was it last week? Yeah, it was last week. Last week, they had their elections. I wanted to congratulate Janet Zhang, their new president. And also just a big thank you to Salem Wong for his leadership the last two years as AF president. He did so much and I know everybody was grateful for his leadership. And he will still continue to be a part of AF and helping out the new president. So we're happy to do that. I also wanted to welcome that they were able to get five new trustees, which is wonderful. So thank you to Renee Bonura, Jason Wong, Ringo Swain, Helen Hanmu and Michelle Kim, who are new trustees for AF. Their summer school is going really well. They're really just very excited about it and really happy. Their numbers are up and they're hoping to actually be positive this year. So we're really excited about that. And they also want everyone to let, to know that they are, you can now donate via Zelle. And so if you want to donate, it's afzelle@ausd.net. And I'm sure it's on their new website, which I also know they would love for everyone to go visit because they spend a lot of time-
It's beautiful.
-working on it and it is a great website.
I went there like yesterday. It looks great.
Yeah, so please visit the AF website. I know they, they are really proud of it. And they did a really great job. And the last item for AF is on September 24th from seven to nine PM. In the NPR, they're gonna finally have their first workshop. It's a financial seminar. And it's kind of a pilot. And so they're hoping like that it'll go well. And, and hopefully we'll announce a six-week workshop program on financial literacy for students. So it's really exciting and I know they're excited to hopefully bring some other workshops next year on various topics. So I will continue to let you know what that is. And that is all I have to report.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Yee. Mrs. Chavez?
Just thanks, Dr. Mendoza, Mr. Anderson, David Wong, all the reports, all that went into it. Thanks to Melinda and Tony too for the great update on all the projects, your dear. And lastly, just to Dr. Tong because I think that innovation with absence recovery is really gonna serve us well as we continue to tweak it and move forward. And happy summer. Like the first day of summer was this past week, so.
Oh, yeah.
It's official.
Thank you, Mrs. Chavez. I don't also, don't have too much more to add. Also, thank you for all the reports. I know a lot, a lot, a lot of work goes into putting a budget together, of course, the L cap, the local indicators. So thank you, Dr. Mendoza, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Wong for all of that work. I know you tried to condense it for us in the meeting, but behind the scenes, there's just so much more that goes on with it. So I appreciate that. And of course, Dr. Hacking, you have been an amazing asset to the district. And we are gonna miss many, many aspects of your presence and all of the positive contributions. And the emphasis on positive. You're just such a positive person all the time. And, you know, we won't be able to replace that aspect of you in particular. So thank you so much and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Dr. Mendoza.
Yeah, I know, I say this annually, but it's still worth saying that when we, at the end of this, end of each year, when we have the, the budget approval for the following year and the L cap. You know, I remember when we got the new LCFF and, and we knew the process that we were going to be going through. And there was a decision to be made that, you know, this could be a compliance piece and we can check the boxes. Or we can really invest in this process to make it our measuring stick for, you know, our improvement and where we want to be, looking three years out. And then how are we going to attach the resources, the funds to ensure that they're going in the place that's gonna best meet the needs of our, of our students. And so I'm just very proud each year that we get to this point and, and we know how many team members it took to get to the point where you're presenting these plans. And so just thank you to the entire team and all of the departments that worked together to pull this off. I know that was an integral part when we, when we built the AEC, was trying to make sure that all of the departments were integrated. And so, you know, there was just a lot of flow among them and not separated like we had in the old depart, in the old district office. And I think we achieved that. I'm very proud of that work. So thank you all for, for all of that. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Mendoza. And like Mrs. Chavez said, I hope everyone has a wonderful summer. Stay safe. It's gonna start getting warm soon, so stay cool as well. All right, I will adjourn at nine oh five. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.